You're in trouble. We all in trouble. All right, the hour is upon us. I'd like to call the August 3rd, 2023 meeting of the CASC Grand Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Please join me in pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, shall we call the roll, please?
Member Aldret?
Here.
Member Vanderhayden?
Here.
Member Hubbard?
Here.
Member Peters?
Here.
Member Estrada?
Here.
Vice Chair Garza?
Here.
Chairman Benedict?
Here.
Okay, any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, there are a couple of changes that I'd like to make the commission aware of. Yeah, the first is that the zone change on four-leaf properties from Urban Ranch to R4 for the property, 120 acres on Ghost Ranch Road, that's been withdrawn and it won't be coming back because the four-leaf properties has actually withdrawn their contract to purchase that site from the city. So with the withdrawing of that contract, this item will not be coming back. So I don't know if there's anyone in the audience tonight that is here for that item. We tried to make some public notices and notifications, but if there's anyone in the audience, that item will not be heard. The other thing I'd like to note is that the zoning code text amendment that for self-storage facilities has been modified to be from a public hearing and actual consideration of the text amendment. Instead of having a formal public hearing and formal consideration of the text amendment, we'd like to just have a study session and a discussion with the commission about some of the aspects and proposed changes that staff is recommending. When we sent out the agenda, Commissioner Aldret actually raised some good points with us regarding the proposal that caused us to want to pause and take another look at the approach. So Jaclyn will be briefing the commission and leading a discussion on that when that item comes up, but no public hearing, no vote. So that's it for the changes to the agenda.
Very good, thank you. Okay, commissioners, you have the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion?
Yes.
That we accept the minutes as written from the meeting of July 6, 2023?
Second.
Okay, motion is second to accept the minutes. Excuse me, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Okay, next is our consent agenda. The item on a request by ARC Services on behalf of Coyote Ranch Storage, DSA 2200290 is the only thing in the consent agenda. If anybody from the commission would like to, on the consent agenda, we can act on it without hearing the full presentation unless somebody from the commission or from the public would like to hear it, then we'll pull it from the consent agenda and go through the regular process of having a hearing. Somebody want to hear this?
I would be interested in hearing the proposal as it's been recently.
Very good, thank you, appreciate you stepping up. All right, so that's next. Jaclyn, are we ready to present? We'll hear the consideration for the request for Coyote Ranch Storage LLC, major site plan for the development of 129,000 acres, DSA 2200290.
Hey, Commissioner, this request is a major site plan approval to construct a self-storage recreation and recreational, let me start over again, self-storage and recreational vehicle storage facility on approximately 6.45 acres located northeast corner of Rodeo and Panal. The site will consist of 241 units and 460, or excuse me, 241 controlled climate storage units, 464 storage units, and 31 RV storage units for a total of 705 units. The site is within the planned area development for Coyote Ranch and is designated as commercial. Self-storage is allowed use within this commercial designated area. And then the remaining 2.6 acres on the site at the hard corner of Panal and Rodeo will be developed as a commercial use at a future time. So here's the proposed site plan. Here are the review criterias that the staff report goes over. I don't have anything, I just did want to show the proposed elevations. This was one of the big talking points at the neighborhood meeting that I'll get into on the next slide. For the development, for the side of development facing Coyote Ranch, so that'd be the east development, they've added additional trellises that match the rest of the site as well as additional landscaping. As noted, we did have a neighborhood meeting that was actually held last year before the application was received. I did send out notices of application and review when this was first submitted back in the beginning of the year. This was published in the dispatch and notices were mailed, actually I think I did 500 feet, to be honest, for notices, and sites are posted on the site. As noted in the meeting, neighborhood meeting last year, major concerns were with the landscaping. The developer and applicant worked with the Coyote Ranch HOA and they are doing additional landscaping within the drainage track along the east side of this development. And then they added additional articulation details, as noted. And then other comments from the meeting really addressed was about the commercial sites. So if there are any additional, so we recommend that the approve the major site plan request. Could I get into any details if there are any additional comments from the public or applicant is here to speak on this as well?
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Don't see any. Very good, is the applicant present? Would they like to speak to this issue? Okay. This, this action does not require a public hearing, but I think I'd like to, I'd like to open it up to the public to come and address, address any concerns that you would have. Anybody from the public like to address this issue? Come on up and give us your name and address.
Linda Stamper, 261 East White Wing Court.
Good, and you, your time has started, three minutes.
I would like to see the photo of the other one, the one that you put, yes. Our, some of our concern was, of course, the landscaping and what we would have to look at from our side of the street. So the plan that he put up there then with the photo of the trees? Yeah. Did they, are they planning to put trees there or just different kinds of landscaping or what? Do we take what we get or do we have any say about that or what?
Along the east side, there'll be additional trees planted within the landscape retention track for Coyote Ranch.
So.
Jaclyn, I think she's asking about the type of vegetation that they're going to plant. Do we specify what plant material?
The applicant may be able to speak this a little more, but it was, I don't have that in mind, landscape plan.
Let's, let's get the rest of the comments first and then.
That was some of my concern was just what we were going to be viewing there at all the time. We have upgraded our landscaping in those areas and we would like it to look nice and that's part of our consideration. Another thing that I see on there is that major road that goes into that, will that also be used by whatever building is put on the remaining lot?
Yes, they will share an access.
Share an access, okay. That was it, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address this issue? Thank you, appreciate that, yes? Yep, come on up, come on up.
Good evening, my name's Tim Gilroy, I live at 243 East Granite Trail, which is nearby this proposed facility. And I, I know it's, it's going to be beneficial in some ways, but it's going to be different. Change is always a challenge to deal with. My concerns are kind of twofold. One, it seems we're going to be taking a large lot that has been open desert for many, many years really, forever, and now it's going to be paved over or built over. And my sense is that the drainage for that is going to be going into the drainage area just to the east of it in, in the area that's owned by the Coyote Ranch Homeowners Association. I'm just wondering, you know, has this been, you know, reviewed and figured out in terms of exactly what that's going to mean, you know, five, you know, it's been very dry the last few years, but if we get a lot of rain, you know, has, has anyone really figured out where that water will go and, and will it work in that drainage area, especially when it's draining into property that's not part of the, of the storage facility? And the other thing is that I'm a little bit perplexed that the whole idea that they're putting trees to make it look better, but they're putting it on land that they don't own with somehow some provision, some idea that they're going to maintain and keep up those trees, not just for the next year or two, but forever, I presume is the requirement. And what do we do 10 years from now when the trees are overgrown, broken, not being irrigated, whatever? What, where, is there any, you know, facility to make the developer continue to maintain what he's agreeing to do now, especially when it's not on his property?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of questions. Gloria Johnson's story, 1245 East Laurel Drive, Casa Grande, Arizona. When you said there wasn't going, a need for open discussion, does this mean this is a done deal?
No, it's, it's just doesn't, doesn't require what, exactly what we're doing right now. It's not required.
Because it's in the master plan and?
It's not, it's not required per, you know, per the guidelines, but it's.
This is one of the things though they're going to see coming in on Panal and I guess I, me and car washes, but that's another story. There's another storage unit not too far down the road, and then I have a home on Rodeo Road, as you all know, and there's a storage unit out there, but is this going to look good as an entrance to Casa Grande? I know we just put in the 1,162 manufactured home park further up and it's just like when they come into Casa Grande, what do we want them to see? And Coyote Ranch is such a, I mean, it's one of the nice communities around here and it's kind of going to block them out, is, am I, am I understanding that right?
Okay, well, we'll, we'll, we'll address that as we can when.
Okay, I was just curious, this is something that I wasn't aware of, but I did have some questions about whether the wisdom of putting in a storage unit in that particular location is desirable, because by the time you get some of the big RVs in there, and it looks to be quite a height, but the residents have no problem at Coyote Ranch, is that what I'm hearing?
Is, anything else that you'd like to, comments you'd like to make? We can't, we can't go back and forth with a whole lot of questions.
Okay, well, I was just curious because they had 16 people that showed up and whether or not they approved it, I guess that's the whole thing, but I don't see the, the beauty of coming into Casa Grande and having a storage unit right there. That corner's always been really pretty. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address this issue?
Yes, that's me. Chairman Benedict, members of the commission, my name's Terry Emig, I'm at 174 East Cornerstone Circle in Coyote Ranch. I don't really have a problem with the development itself, I guess my only question is having to do with the entrance, the road in, and while it might be adequate for the existing storage facility, in the future, when that corner is developed, we don't really know what the use for that may be. And it could be a gas station, it could be a drive-through restaurant, it could be something with a high volume of traffic. So my question is, when that corner gets developed, will there be some sort of a turn lane? The traffic gets backed up there now, turning right onto Panal Avenue in the mornings. There needs to be some, some, something done in the future to address that, some sort of a right turn lane or, or some other accommodation made. Will that be addressed at that time when that corner is developed? That would be my only comment.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public like to address this issue? Okay, I will, I guess I'll close the public portion of the meeting, it's not, but love to have the applicant come up and, and address, address the commission, please.
I would like to make a couple notes before he speaks. Regarding the new commercial, the commercial development, that future commercial development, they will be required to do a TIA to, to look at, a new traffic impact analysis. So that would address any future mitigation needed for a right turn lane. And it is right in, right out currently, right now for, for the self-storage. And then on drainage, a drainage report was provided, a final drainage report will be given during the site development. And the retention basins around Coyote Ranch was designed for this drainage. Phil, maybe you'll speak a little, a little more about that or say so, but that it was addressed in the drainage reports. And then on, going back to the landscaping with the HOA, they'll be installing 12 additional trees, and I, I don't have the landscaping plan with me, but it'll be addressed within the final landscaping plan. And, yeah, and the, we do have specific plants and trees in our landscape. Oh, and then there is also a 15-foot landscape buffer along Panal, and I will note that this has been designated for commercial since Coyote Ranch PD was developed in 1999.
Okay, and if you could give us your name and address?
I'm Phil Gollan, I'm with ARC, we're the architects that are working with the client on this property. In terms of the landscape, we just followed your palette and we added mesquite trees about every 15 feet, I believe it was. And we originally had just trellises on the building, and at the neighborhood meeting, they wanted a little bit more than that and we agreed to that. So we got with the HOA and we talked about planting those trees on, off the property on the track. We will maintain that, we have an agreement with the HOA, the client does, to maintain, maintain that landscape, and that landscape also goes all the way out on the access road, extends all the way down to the, to, is it Panal there or?
Rodeo.
Not Panal, Rodeo, thank you. Then it'll extend all the way down to that entry. In terms of the drainage, when this was master plan, this property was figured into the, the overall drainage report for that community. We also have a separate drainage report that shows a volume that's going into that retention area, and it meets all the requirements that was established in the original master plan for that, for that drainage.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions?
Any questions for the applicant? Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Per se.
I have one more question, staff can answer, can, can you address if, you know, if, if they're not maintaining the vegetation, what does the city do?
It would become a code enforcement case. They'd be handled through, through code enforcement.
Okay, I just wanted to, you know, make that clear that there are steps that the city can take if, if the planned vegetation is not being maintained, there's, there are steps to take to, to force the issue. Okay, any other questions? Commissioners? Yes. Yes, please.
Chairman, I was just going to say that that code enforcement violation if ever surfaced would go to the HOA more or less, right? Because those trees reside on their property. So they would have to work it out of how that maintenance agreement works, so just, just for the record, so folks can hear.
Okay. Anything else? Very quiet this evening, Travis, okay. All right. I think we're back to us, folks. Commissioners, what do we? What's your wish?
I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, sir.
That DSA 22-00290. Oh, we don't have a thing, huh?
Approval.
It approves as it stands.
As presented, okay. I have a motion to approve DSA 2200290 as presented.
Second.
Thank you, motion is second, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Member Aldret?
Aye.
Member Vanderhayden?
Yes.
Member Hubbard?
Yes.
Member Peters?
Aye.
Member Estrada?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garza?
Aye.
Chairman Benedict?
Yes.
All right. Next, we will have a public hearing and consider forward recommendation to City Council for request by Rose Law Group for major amendment to planned area development to amend land use allowed for mining, DSA 230047. Joe, talk to us.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. Rose Law Group is requesting a PAD zone change from the Meritaya, Meritaya Planned Area Development to the Cactus Mine 2 Planned Area Development for approximately 333 acres, generally located north of Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway and west of Bianca Road. You can see the location highlighted below. You see the existing mine in the center of the picture, that's actually resides within the county. You can see the hatched area with the diagonal hatching, that was the Cactus Mine Phase 1 PAD that was heard back in 2021 and approved. Tonight is the Phase 2 portion of the Cactus Mine PAD, which is highlighted in the red. We're also, we've also just received an application for a general plan amendment and a PAD zone change for the Phase 3 portion that you see highlighted in the blue.
Hang on just a second. Sorry to interrupt you guys, I hate to, but it's, yeah, it's kind of getting in, in the way of the presentation, so. Yeah, no worries, no worries, sorry that I had to do that. Please continue.
Thank you for doing that. So a little bit of overview, Arizona Sonoran Copper Company has been working to reopen the Cactus Mine. A PAD was processed, as mentioned before, in 2021 to expand the boundaries of the mine. This request is to further expand that mine boundary. This request is to further expand that mine boundary. In order to support the reopening, this three hundred and thirty-three acres adjacent to the site have been added and are proposed to be used for potential underground mining, which would not be visible from the surface. Also planned in this area may be leach pads, rock storage, and industrial buildings, which are necessary to support the uses for the mine. Additionally, as mentioned, the applicant has submitted for both a major general plan amendment and a zone change for the remaining areas of the Meritaya PAD, which is the area to the south that was highlighted in blue, and they're being processed now. We're expected to conclude those, like December, January timeframe is when our general plan will, will conclude. Just a quick overview, the, you can see the top picture is a leach pad, the, the bottom picture is rock storage. So those are possibilities in this area, but we'll cover that a little bit further in the presentation. In looking at the review criteria, we cover the final, the following criteria, all's been covered in your staff report tonight. We're just gonna concentrate on two key issues. And the first is the relationship with the plan elements to conditions both on and off the property, basically, what's the adverse effects on adjoining properties? So with the, the proposed site shares its eastern and northern boundary with the existing mine area that has portions of land located within both the city and Penal County's jurisdiction. The goal of the rezoning is to further add the additional three hundred and thirty-three acres to expand mining operations while also creating an appropriate buffer to mitigate any impacts associated with the mining. The development standards include setback height, slope requirements for potentially impactful uses that are associated with the mining. Staff feels that these standards implement, once implemented, there will not be adverse impact on abutting property. A couple of things to highlight, you can see the waste rock storage and the leach pad that we saw pictures of. The proposed setback for those are three hundred feet. And then we also set height limitations on those at one hundred and one hundred and forty feet. And then you can also see to the, at the bottom of the picture, that setback also has a three-to-one slope where like the leach pads and/or the rock storage are proposed. That begins at that three hundred feet and goes up from there. So everything for three hundred feet should stay natural vegetation. Just to kinda clarify what we're looking at and, and those setbacks, you can see here's our zoning map. The site is located right in this location here. You see the Urban Ranch, which is the green. The Urban Ranch directly to the west is owned by Cobra Mesa, which is another mining company. And then the stuff to the south is just Urban Ranch owned by an individual. And then you'll see the little keyhole piece, which is an Urban Ranch zone. That's actually the gas line easement, so there's no incentive for there to change it, but it's undevelopable land, so we're not in, we're not putting that three hundred foot setback onto those locations. It's just really in the areas you see highlighted in red where we'll have the three hundred foot setback begin. And then all the stuff to the south, below that little keyhole in green, will be owned by this group and is being processed right now to be part of the mine as well. The next review criteria is conformance to the city's general plan. The site's in the manufacturing industry category. The current zoning of the site actually has two potential uses, single-family residential and/or large-scale solar farms. Neither of those are appropriate within the general plan category of manufacturing industry. So this amendment will bring the zoning into conformance with the general plan. In regards to notification, we met our exceeded all requirements. We did get a couple of emails, one just for general information, the second one we shared with you tonight, and you have a copy of it, but just to kinda summarize it, the person was excited, is involved in mining and before, excited for the economic possibilities of reopening the mine. However, there is concerns about being able to feel blasts from the mine at their home, which is in Heelabutes. Wondering if there's been a study done by the copper company to show what the blast will, will mean for nearby residents. He also mentions that mine blasts at the house is like having small earthquakes. Mine blasts can be felt several mile away and could lower home values. So I will let the applicant kind of address some of the mitigation efforts they have done regarding blasting and any other questions you might have. But in conclusion, staff recommends the commission forward a recommendation to approve the PAD zone change from the Meritaya Planned Area Development to the Cactus Mine Two Planned Area Development for the three hundred and thirty-three acres generally located north of Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway and west of Bianco Road with the following conditions. That condition is our standard right-of-way condition.
All right.
Any questions?
Very good, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
I've got just one.
Yes.
Has work begun, did you say work has been ongoing in the existing mine now?
I'll let the applicant address it. They did do, in twenty-twenty-one, they did do a PAD amendment for that first phase around the mine. And I know that there's done, they've done testing. I don't know if there's any operations that are actually occurring at the mine. The county is where the existing mine's currently located. We haven't, I, I don't recall any building permits or any site development permits for the surrounding areas that's currently located in the city. So I don't think there's any activity as of yet that are, that is occurring within city boundary.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? All right, very good. Would the applicant, their representative like to come forward? Please give us your name and address.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Omar Abdallah. I'm an attorney at Rose Law Group, seven-one-four-four East Stetson Drive in Scottsdale. I represent Arizona Sonoran Copper Company. I do have a presentation, but it's a lot of the same of what Joe already explained in here, he does, he always does a really great job. With me today, I do have Travis Snyder, who's part of the leadership team at Arizona Sonoran, so he can answer some of your technical questions in a little bit. But Joe is correct, the, the mine was purchased, so the last time it was operational was in the nineteen eighties, and it's been out of commission since. And so Arizona Sonoran purchased the mine in twenty-twenty and has been in the process of doing the environmental studies and all the different type of work that, that's needed to be done to determine the feasibility of the mine and basically get it up to speed so that it could be mined. In twenty-twenty-one, Arizona Sonoran purchased some of that land surrounding the existing mines, existing mine, which is in the city, and that was rezoned to PAD. And so the subject of today's request is the area that's bordered in red, three hundred and thirty-three acres, which would essentially join the rest of the area for potential underground mining, leach pad, rock storage, and industrial buildings. Travis can probably comment a little bit about the underground blasting and also what stage they are in terms of getting the mine operational.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Travis Snyder. I'm the senior, I'm the VP of Sustainability and External Relations for Arizona Sonoran, and I live at one-six-three-four-one East Montrose Drive in Fountain Hills, Arizona. And yes, to answer your question, we are not currently in operation, we're still in exploration. We're working on what we call our pre-feasibility study, which is the document that we have to have to show that there is an economical ore deposit that can be mined. That is expected to be completed by the first quarter of next year. And then from there, we would do what's called a bankable feasibility, where we would have about a ten percent margin on all of our costs and estimates. And then after the bankable feasibility study would be where we'd make a construction decision, yes, is it viable, is it not viable? To answer the question about the blasting, we did hire Nino and Moore, an engineering firm out of Phoenix, to do a blast analysis based on a typical type of, you know, ampero ammonium nitrate explosive unit, where we did simulate what it would look like to the nearby residents. It didn't show anything was, you know, approaching the vibration levels in that area. We do need to do further study and, and actually do a real simulated blast and get mega, and get seismic phones out there to pick it up. This was all calculated off rock, you know, vibration travel through certain types of rocks. But that would be for an open pit scenario. Underground mining uses much less explosives, and there's, you know, if you all were here whenever the Sacotone Mine was actually in production, a lot has changed in blasting technology since the early seventies and eighties. There's different things, like you can go to emulsions, you can use smaller blasting charges, you can increase the number of holes that you have with smaller amounts. But we will continue to do studies and, and we're, we're happy to provide that to you guys, the analysis that we've done thus far.
All right.
Questions? Just, just, just a comment, and I appreciate you addressing the blasting. That seems to be the, the biggest fear and the biggest concern, that neighborhoods might, and it sounds like, it sounds like it's gonna be a while, and there's gonna be testing done prior to all of that.
Yeah. That, that is correct, yeah. We, we would not anticipate being into production until probably twenty-twenty-six, and there's still a lot more study work to be done. You know, our, our goal, and, and as a VP of Sustainability, is to be a neighbor that you don't hear, see, smell, nothing. We, we really want this to be a new type of mine that's different from the other ones because we've got the vantage point of, of being a new production with technology that's coming in, that's, that's changing things as, as, that's changing things in, in mining.
All right. Yes. Those leach pads, is there multiple or just one large one? Or how do those normally work for something like that, the leach pad?
So, so we actually have probably, you know, right now, we're, we're not planning on using that, you know, this area that, that we're asking for a zoning change.
Right.
For leach pads. It'll actually be within the county.
Okay.
But as we find more ore, or as, you know, commodity prices change and we need more room, we would like to have some flexibility to be able to use this area if possible, you know, you know, if commodity prices dip, then we're gonna be, we're gonna be mining much less. But if it goes up, we, we might have more rock and more, more ore that's leachable at the time.
I kinda thinking that the, this letter we got from Mr. McGinn, that he was worried about, I think, smell probably from leach pad, or just, just looks?
Uh, I haven't, I didn't see his comments.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't, if you saw that.
I would assume that it's more of a visual.
Visual.
Is what I gather from reading the email.
Okay.
Because he was concerned with height.
Correct.
So I don't think it had a smell.
Okay.
Associated with it necessarily.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Chairman, I have a quick question. The, have you guys done any coordination with Kinder Morgan to discuss how the blasting impacts could affect their underground mine?
Yes, ma'am. We have been in, we have been in contact with their engineers quite a bit.
Okay.
And, and, you know, so, so we understand that they have a blast radius of a hundred feet within, or a thousand feet within their, within their, adjacent to their, their, their two pipelines that are there. We're, you know, looking at potentially, you know, if it does become an issue, finding a place to relocate it, maybe running it up on the north side of the mine to get it away from that area.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, anything else? All right, good, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate that. Now I'd like to open the public portion of the meeting. If anybody from the public would like to address this issue, please come on up and give your name and address. And seeing none, I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Bring it back to the commission. Commissioners?
Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
To recommend, forwarding a recommendation of approval of DSA twenty-three zero-zero-zero four-seven for the PAD zone change of the Meritaya Planned Area Development to the Cactus Mine Two Planned Area Development with the staff's conditions.
Very good, thank you. I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Heard a second. Discussion, seeing none, please call the roll.
Member Aldret?
Aye.
Member Vanderhayden?
Yes.
Member Hubbard?
Yes.
Member Peters?
Aye.
Member Estrada?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garza?
Yes.
And Chairman Benedict?
Yes. Okay. Item number two, DSA twenty-three zero-zero-zero-five-four has been pulled. Item number three, DSA twenty-two zero-zero-two-four-one, we're gonna hear, listen to a presentation, very exciting, stimulating presentation. Let's go with that. We believe in you.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. So currently looking at self-storage, it's only allowed in the B4, which is Community Services with conditional use permit, or I2 with the CUP, and then PADs, however, they must meet PAD requirements. The purpose of this text amendment is to allow self-storage facilities in two additional zoning districts, B2 and I1. Current CUP standards for self-storage are a little outdated and do not result in the type of self-storage facilities that would be an asset to the community. And it's originally shown in the stack report and text amendment, we included all of them as conditional use permits in B2, B4, I1, and I2. But after receiving feedback from Commissioner Aldret, we decided to revise this agenda item as discussion to get more feedback from all the commissioners, and we'll bring it back to next month's meeting. So a little bit of an overview, some of the, we revised the definition for self-storage. We added, so currently we add them as all CUPs, and then we created development, development standards associated with self-storage facilities that include architectural requirements, establishes different setbacks and landscaping requirements. And then we've also revised the parking requirements. And like I said, we'd like to get feedback. And one of the reasonings behind this text amendment is that we've received a lot of proposals for self-storage for a variety of reasons. One of them could be because the housing types are a little smaller now, so they need additional room to store. And then we do feel that this use is a good on sites that does not have certificates of assured water, and I think they are relatively good neighbors, they're low traffic volume. And, yeah, so we'd just like to open it up to the different types of zoning districts, and we're allowing additional reduced setbacks, but we also want to raise the standards and the aesthetics for these type of uses, and so that's why we're requiring additional development standards. So a little bit, so again, here's the definition that we revised, and then we are looking at setbacks for front and corner side. They'd be equal to the height of the building, but at least in no case fifteen feet, so that would allow for the fifteen-foot landscape buffer. And then when they are adjacent to residentially zoned or used properties, they shall comply with the setbacks for that zoning district that they're in. And if they're not adjacent to residentially zoned sites, the setback may be reduced to zero. And then we do have the asterisk that if they're, like, in some cases, a lot, a lot of places, like you've seen in I2 areas, or in the rural areas where I2 would be allowed, they're adjacent to Urban Ranch, and that's kind of just a placeholder. So that's kind of why we added the asterisk, that if the site doesn't have cause, or they could be developed, they probably won't be developed as residential, so it would be up to the commission to see if that, that would be allowed for reduced setback. And then here are some examples, some architectural details that we're looking at, that we've included in the development standards. So again, are there any questions or comments, or just like to open it up to discussion with the commission?
All righty. Commissioners?
I know.
Please enlighten us on what.
Oh, I guess I didn't finish that thought. So the idea was, sorry, to, why we were making them all conditional use permit, permitted uses and not. Oh, I guess I didn't finish that thought. So the idea was, sorry, to why we were making them all conditional use permitted uses and not allowing them as of right in I2, I4, or excuse me, I1 and B4. I think we should still keep it as a conditional use permit in B2.
So my initial thought when I got the packet was kind of looking at it as somebody who works in the Tucson metro in different jurisdictions, looks at their zoning codes, what uses they allow in their different zones, and it struck me very quickly that it was much different than a lot of the jurisdictions in the Tucson metro area, in that a lot of those jurisdictions, whether it's at least one zone or multiple zones, self-storage is a use that is permitted by right, so they don't have to go through the conditional use process. A lot of those jurisdictions also require performance standards for those self-storage uses. So I know they have a limit on the size of a self-storage facility within the C1 zone. I believe you can't go larger than three acres. So it's certain things like that they have placed in their code where you can do it by right, but you have to meet those standards. And so they don't have to come in front of a commission like this and waste, but use extra time and money during their development process just to get the self-storage facility. And the thing with the self-storage facility itself, as Jaclyn mentioned, they're typically good neighbors, they're low-traffic uses, they're not high-intensity, and when you dress them up to look more like an office building, they can be a very attractive development, especially near neighborhoods. So that's where, just based on looking at the Tucson metro, I decided, okay, well, what's around us? So I looked at the different jurisdictions around us. They also permit self-storage in their zones. And then looking at the Phoenix Valley, multiple jurisdictions up there also permit them within their commercial and industrial zones. Not all of them do, but a good, the large cities tend to allow it in a zone. It doesn't matter if it's the general commercial zone. Sometimes it's allowed, sometimes it's a conditional use, but typically it's almost always allowed, permitted by right, within the I1 and the I2 zone. So that's where, just seeing what was around us, what's happening in the state of Arizona and other jurisdictions, I thought it would be more appropriate to align the city of Casa Grande with those other jurisdictions in what they permit in their zones, just so that we're kind of on that level competitive playing field when trying to draw in development and not creating additional processes that may not be necessary for this use.
Thank you very much for that, doing that kind of research and all, and for that kind of concern, you know, for our citizens and the developers. I appreciate that a lot. That's great work, good job. Great consideration, you know, that you've done. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do.
Good job.
Commissioners, what else?
So just, Jaclyn, can you put it in the example of the Coyote Ranch storage that we heard earlier? So did they come before the commission previously for the conditional use permit before coming with this major site plan?
So that one was a little different in that it was decided prior to me starting that, because it was in a PAD zone, that, and at the time of that PAD development, it was allowed in that, in commercial areas. At some point, it was revised to take them out of commercial zoning districts.
Okay.
So.
It's been around that long.
So that's why, so that's why they did not need a CUP.
Okay.
But looking at it, with these standards that we put in, I feel it meets these development standards.
Yes, it does. Makes sense.
Any other thoughts, comments? Jaclyn's waiting for us to.
I know.
We get to tell her what to do instead of the other way around, something like that.
Are we voting on something?
No, yeah, so is everybody good with changing it to an allowed permitted use in B4, I1, and I2, and CUP in B2?
I think Garrett's got a good point in just aligning with the other metropolitan areas.
Sure.
Eventually we will anyways.
Absolutely. Is the B2 zone the lower intensity zone?
Yes, that's your general commercial. So that's what could be adjacent to, most likely adjacent to residential.
Like, okay, like for instance on Florence Boulevard, we wouldn't, you know, wouldn't allow it in those locations without the CUP.
Correct. In B2.
In B2. Does that make sense?
Doesn't it? Yeah, so all of the Rs, it's not allowed.
No, it's not allowed in residential, no. But a lot of times, B2 is adjacent to residential.
Right. And we have a B1?
Yes, but it's very, that's, it's rare, and it's really just office uses. It's not an intense commercial use.
Okay, and it wouldn't be allowed in B1?
Yeah, B1 or commercial office. Or is it?
CUP for B2.
Put that slide back up where it said.
Yeah.
The question, that one.
This one?
Yeah.
Paul, did you want to add anything?
I would just like to note for the commission that the removal of the CUP requirement for the B4, I1, and I2 doesn't mean that they're not going to come before the commission, because they certainly will be coming before the commission as a major site plan, just like the Coyote Ranch one did this evening. And the commission can hold a public hearing on it, take public input, and, you know, make, impose conditions on a major site plan as well. So it's not like the CUP would be your only opportunity to view the project. You certainly will have an opportunity to look at the major site plan in all four zone districts.
Good point. Thank you. Anything else? All right. We'll move on to next item. When anybody from the public would like to address the commission on any general topics? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion of the meeting, and here are reports from the director.
Okay, it looks like we had no administrative approvals, no board of adjustment decisions. City council did hear a lot of items that the planning commission had forwarded recommendations to and approved them all, but there was one change to one of your recommendations that I'd like to point out to you, and it's on the item G. It's for the Tribe Valley PAD revision. The commission imposed a condition that the applicant had raised his block wall to eight feet as a condition of the zoning. City council, in considering that, decided that they were going to remove the eight-foot wall condition. They did require that the wall be six feet, be brought up to six feet per the original approval, but did not make the applicant raise the wall to eight feet at this time. Now, having said that, the commission still will have an opportunity to look at whether or not the wall should be eight feet in conjunction with any conditional use permit request that comes in. You know, you added three conditional use permit, conditional uses to the PAD, and in fact, I believe the applicant has already submitted an application for one of those conditional uses for the storage facility, I believe. And so you will have another opportunity to visit whether or not you want an eight-foot wall along the boundary of Lot 1 in conjunction with that CUP. But for right now, council did eliminate that condition, so wanted to make you aware of that. Michelle, did we, were we able to print our monthly development center reports?
Yes, they have them.
Unclear. They have them? Okay, good. So I don't have them, so hopefully you don't have.
I emailed them to you.
I didn't get it. No, I didn't get the email. So.
I promise you, I emailed them.
All right. Okay. I believe you, I believe you. Okay, well, that's all I have to report then. Thank you.
Don't send them nothing. All right, commissioners, anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none?
Move dead, sir.
All right. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There we go.
I know.
Whatever.
Oh, we took bets. We took bets.